Welcome again to the Candidates Forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters for Northwest Wayne County. The second part of our forum features the remaining six city council candidates running in the August 6th primary who are able to join us tonight. Each candidate will be allowed again, one minute for an opening statement, one minute to respond to questions, and one minute for a closing statement. We will begin this evening with Mr. McCullough, and when we have our closing remarks, we will do it in reverse order. Thank you.
Thanks again to the Women League of Voters for hosting this event. Woman number one, can everybody hear me? Everybody hear me okay? All right. Events like this are a great tool for citizens of Livonia to make the right decision at the voting booth. My name is Brandon McCullough. I'm a lifelong resident of Livonia, a father of a Livonia Buchanan bear, a husband to a Livonia Franklin Special Education teacher, a product of a Livonia Public Schools, a graduate with honors from Lawrence Tech University, the former director of construction at Habitat for Humanity, the current facilities manager at the City of Noby where I manage two divisions, act as a sustainable bureau, act as owner's representation on large capital projects including an ongoing $11 million DFW renovation. I'm committed to providing Livonia a new vision while trailblazing new growth that the city desperately needs. I will be able to hit the ground running, roll up the sleeves on day one, and help the city grow.
Thank you. Ms. McIntyre?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kathleen McIntyre, and I am seeking reelection to the Livonia City Council for a second term. Thank you to the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County for holding tonight's forum. Four years ago, I was honored and humbled when the voters elected me as city council president. I promised to work hard to move our city forward, and I have kept that promise. You have seen my work ethic, thorough preparation for meetings and public hearings, and active engagement with our wonderful community. I'm again asking for your support and your vote so I can continue to work hard and enthusiastically for all of you. Specifically, I am committed to ensuring that Livonia remains one of the safest cities in Michigan by attracting and retaining the best police officers and firefighters, maintaining low taxes and debt, and continuing to be a vibrant community welcome to all. I'm very happy to have this opportunity tonight, and it's great to see so many of our engaged citizens here. Thank you.
Thank you. And is it Mr. Donovan?
Donovan, yes. Good evening. My name is Rob Donovan, and I'm running for Livonia City Council. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, the candidates, and of course, all of you for being here tonight. So I grew up Livonia Public Schools, went to Johnson Elementary, Frost Middle School, Churchill High School, School of Health College. Played football for the Orioles right there at Bentley Field, played for Churchill High School football team, Go Chargers. Growing up as a kid, I worked at my family's restaurant right down the street at Plymouth and Exeter called Marco's Cozy Diner. And there I learned and decided that I wanted to get more involved. My family immigrated to America in the 1980s. My family came from nothing. And because of this great community, my family now has an opportunity. And that's why I'm running for office, because I want to serve. I want to give back to the community that's given everything to me and my family. It's why I joined the military, it's why I joined the police department, and ultimately, it's why I'm running for city council. So I hope to answer your questions, and I look forward to learning and meeting all of you tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Duncan is not here, so Mr. Davis?
Good evening. I'm a longtime resident of Livonia, where my children were able to attend the same school as my wife attended. I'm running for city council because I believe public service to be a true calling. For 30 years, I served to protect and enrich the community as a police officer. As a police academy director and instructor, I advise students that the desire to help others was the key to future success. I also am a teacher at Wayne State University where I show activist students how to apply their passion in various areas of government based upon their desire to help others. I protected our most vulnerable populations, the elderly from exploitation and mortgage fraud task forces, our youth in one of the first internet predator units. I have enriched our community through years of service at Rosedale Gardens Church, through Mission, and a senior transportation ministry. Finally, I believe our tax dollars should responsibly follow our values, including strong public safety. My name is Jim Davis. I'm asking for your support and your vote on August 6th. Thank you.
Ms. McDonald? Thank you. Good evening. My name is Eileen McDonald. And I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters Northwest Wayne to have us here this evening. Professionally, I'm a proposal and contract administrator for my employer, PBS Chemicals. I manage multimillion dollars of city and county water treatment chemical contracts annually. I was a Livonia Public School trustee from 2012 through 16, and I consider myself, and do, consider myself a voice for all, especially students of special needs. My husband Bob and I have been part of this city for the last 23 years. We love Livonia, and we raised our children here. We moved to Livonia during a time when a lot of people wanted new homes and were moving west. Now we are seeing insurgents of people working and living in town, young people wanting to experience new city life. I want to see this trend continue. I want to be part of the execution of Livonia Master Plan. I believe in transparency in government, open discussion. With my experience, I will bring a question to the council. Please vote for me, Eileen McDonald.
Thank you. And we will start questions with Mr. McCullough, and then we start rotation, both questions and answers. The first question is, do you believe there is a opioid abuse problem in Livonia? If so, what will you do to curb it or offer rehabilitation to those afflicted by it?
Absolutely. I personally have lost my father-in-law to an opioid overdose. Education has got to be key. Right now, there are programs in place that many of you may not know about. I attended the opioid forum at Stevenson about two months ago, and I was blown away by some of the stories and some of the programs that do exist. I think there needs to be a partnership between the city, between public safety, police, fire, the schools, and we need to combat this. We could come together and create the program that is used all around, you know, maybe even nationally, to combat this crisis. It happens too fast, and I think education needs to be the forefront. Because I think if people were more educated, I don't think we'd be losing as many people as we are.
Ms. McIntyre?
Absolutely. If you don't think that there's a crisis here, then you're not paying attention and listening. Because there's not only a crisis here, no one wants to believe there's a crisis in their community. But there is a crisis in our community, there's a crisis in the state, there's a crisis in the country. I was one of the council members who strongly supported and advocated for Livonia joining a lawsuit with other communities against the opioid industry. I normally don't like to take industries to task for doing their business. But the industry as a whole, and many of the players in the industry, did not conduct themselves in the ways that they were supposed to in terms of the number of prescriptions they wrote, the number of pills per prescription. I've been a very strong supporter of our public safety. Our police and firefighters are both very active in the space. We look for collaboration with other communities, we look for collaboration with the state, we look for partnerships with our healthcare partners such as St. Mary's through our Healthy Livonia Communities Initiative. Thank you.
Mr. Donovan?
Absolutely, and that's unfortunate. From my experience in law enforcement, I've been ministering, I've been on those scenes, and it's a scenario you don't ever want to see. And it affects just about everyone we know. At Stevenson High School, they had the forum on this epidemic, and they talked about it in great length, and it does impact Livonia right here. Sometimes you think it doesn't necessarily impact our community, but it does. Fortunately enough for us, we've got a great department, police agency, great fire department, that are trained to answer these situations. And St. Mary's and other hospitals nearby in our community also are training their staff to make sure that they can answer these. But education is key here. We have to make sure we educate people and make sure that there are opportunities if they do have an issue that they can reach out to the community and other organizations to help them get through this. Because it is addiction, and it doesn't go away lately.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Yeah, I too believe that education is important and a key. The idea that we could leverage some of our city assets, like save our youth in that area, I think they could be doing more in that area. Also, as a practitioner and an academic, I believe that the police could play a role. I believe that in the future, not just here but around the country, that police should divert to treatment programs. It's treatment, not prosecution, is what I think the future is for drugs. And through partnerships with the court, you can make that happen. The Wayne County Circuit Court has one of the first specialty courts regarding treatment for drugs. And I don't think we do ourselves a favor by putting our youth and people who are addicted into the criminal justice system. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McDonald?
Thank you. We do have a problem here in Livonia. I personally have a friend who lost her 23-year-old son a year ago to opioid addiction. And there was nothing more got marching to see a 23-year-old, beautiful young man in a casket. And it's something that we all need to be aware of. We all need to make sure that we are educated and learn more about this crisis. And it is absolutely a problem. But I think importantly too, we need to protect our first responders, to ensure that they're not in touch with any of the potential drugs that kill these people. There's so much we need to do, and we need to support, and we need to educate, and we need to do whatever we can to stop this. It has no age limit. There's no barrier, young, old, in between, it doesn't matter. Thank you.
Next question, we will begin with Ms. McIntyre. What is your position on Livonia having a marijuana medical outlet or recreational marijuana outlet in the city of Livonia?
When the marijuana initiative, recreational marijuana, was passed by the voters, and we all know we've had medical marijuana legal for a number of years in Michigan. Livonia, after a lot of careful consideration and a lot of consultation with our attorneys, decided to be an opt-out community, meaning that we wouldn't have facilities here. And some people expressed disappointment because they see it as a revenue opportunity. We took this action, and I was supportive of the action not to have it here, after a lot of consultation with our public safety department and a lot of consultation with educators and people that are in the treatment space. There is an excise tax that's provided if you have one of these facilities, and people look at that as a great revenue stream. The reason that there's a tax benefit provided is because of the additional costs that communities bear by having these facilities. That money's not for free, and usually, the additional tax revenue you recognize doesn't begin to offset the true cost that you experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan?
I'm open to discussions on anything, I think as a council member. As a member of government, you should always listen and be open to conversation. As it stands, I do not support medical marijuana facilities in Livonia. The council has taken action on that. I do support that. But again, I'm open to discussion. I'd love to learn more about it. I just don't necessarily know the consequences that a community would bear currently. As the future goes on, maybe things could change, but right now, I do not support that Livonia.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
In my world, I spent three years managing an enforcement unit for the Medical Marijuana Act. We enforced proper marijuana cards, proper outlets under the state law. With the new law, the Marijuana Tax Act, police departments are frozen. They are stuck in what they can do. The law is vague. We don't know how to enforce it. Police departments across the state have stopped enforcing marijuana. I understand citizens don't want to live next door to that. It was at a council meeting here where one of our citizens was complaining about that. A period marijuana was growing in the house next to her as well. There are some rules that can be enforced regarding that, but it is vague, and we need the state to take action on clarifying our laws. Thank you.
Ms. McDonald? Thank you. I think it's something that the government needs to consider. Instead of just having freestanding outlets for medical marijuana, and to put these actually into pharmacies and have it in a more controlled environment. I know it's a big concern with having open marijuana facilities for our public safety servants. And I think it would be something that I would have to learn more about as to what the rules are and the laws are. But I think again, it's something that I'll have to review and look into further. As far as freestanding growth facilities and such, I don't believe I would be in favor of that.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next question, we will begin with Mr. Donovan?
I didn't get a chance to answer that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. I'm sorry, my minute, just, yeah, please, all right. I personally, for, you know, I know a lot of people that use marijuana for medical use. I'm very open to that as a use of, as medical purposes. As for facilities inside our city limits, right now, these medical facilities dispensaries are not approved at a federal level. And so until that changes, I'm sorry, Livonia was founded on Families First. That's our model, right? And so I have a five-year-old, and you know what? Until that changes and there's more oversight, and like I said, I would be open at a federal level and the right solution, but right now, it's just not there, so I would be opposed.
Now we'll begin with Mr. Donovan on the next question.
Take two.
What is your position on the Ford Livonia Transmission Plant contamination of the Arden Village neighborhood? What would you do about this problem?
Well, first of all, I think we need to start listening to the residents that live there. I think that's the most important part. These are the individuals that aren't going to be able to sell their homes. These are individuals that have to live in that contamination. So I think first and foremost, let's listen to them, and then after that, let's start looking at the science behind it and start talking to the experts and how we can fix the issue. I'm not an expert in contamination spills, but we need to hold individuals accountable, whether that be Ford, whether that be any one person. Because people are affected by this, their livelihood is affected by it. And quite frankly, we don't know what's going to happen to their health five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road. So I think it's very important, I think as a member of council, I would definitely take that into more consideration. I think the city government has done a phenomenal job working with the leaders in the community. But work can always be done. But I think first and foremost, is just listen to the residents and contact with experts and have an open discussion about what needs to be done to fix the problem first, and then look at how we hold these individuals accountable so it does not happen again.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Well, it's unfortunate that this type of environmental pollution happens, and we don't know it till we know it. But once we know it, it's our responsibility to address it, to mitigate the problem, to clean it up, to not ever do it again, and to learn from it. And I think that when I know of this issue, and I think that Ford is engaged in cleaning up this issue, and I think that it won't happen again. My hope is that we move past this and that we can get clear readings from the water table in that area and that those types of chemicals are not used in manufacturing, especially in residential areas of a city like ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McDonald? Thank you. I absolutely believe that our council and our city administration needs to back, to get back behind these people in this community, in this, in Arden Village. It is, to me, very frightening that I've read some of the blog spots about people, just people in hazmat suits in these neighborhoods, and the people that live there aren't protected. I don't understand this. We need to force the issue. We need to be on Ford, we need to be on the DEQ. We need to be with the Attorney General's Office to find out what the root cause of this is. And we need to find out when they knew, how they knew, and why they didn't share it. I think it's all very important that this needs to be very transparent, and we need to do something about it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McCullough?
So this contamination, of which I've heard is one of the largest on land contaminations that's currently happening. I've known and talked to many people that currently live down that subdivision, and at the end of the day, they still are Livonia residents. And so as a council member, I think an advisory committee, something, maybe, you know, the hands are tied from the MDEQ or the state. But we can have a voice, and council needs to be the leaders of the city to create that voice. As little as an advisory committee to let the neighbors know, hey, we're there for you. We're going to stand by you and not let, you know, I'm going to go two directions here to try to get two generations. I mean, the street looks like either ET, or if you're familiar with Stranger Things, there's people with hazmat suits every single day down these streets. That's unacceptable.
Ms. McIntyre?
This is a very difficult and painful situation for the residents who are there. I've heard from many of them, I've spent a lot of time talking to them. There's an issue of standing, and council and the administration, and I don't speak for the administration, but I will in this case, everyone is concerned about this issue, but there's an issue of standing. And when a city, this is an issue that unfortunately is between the property owners and Ford Motor Company. The city does not play a role in this. The city has no ability to play a role in the remediation of this. This is also an issue at the state level because the MDEQ was involved because of the contamination. The city has looked at the issue, is concerned about the issue, but it is not appropriate from a legal or jurisdiction perspective for us to take action. And that's a sad thing, an unfortunate thing to hear, but at times when you're in council, you have to be willing in any elected position to draw the line as to what you can control and what you can't control.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan?
Yeah. It's okay.
The next question, we will begin-
Can I go in a minute?
No.
Mr. Davis, what infrastructure investments would you encourage first, and why, and how would you suggest supporting it?
Well, I look at infrastructure like I look at my 1958 Livonia ranch house. I know that it's 60 years old. I know that repairs are coming. I know that it needs a roof. I know that it needs plumbing. I have a leaky faucet right now that I just am ignoring. But it's not, it's not a good policy. You know, what we need to do as a city is understand where we're at and where we need to go. And we make a plan and we start saving, like my wife Elaine and I did. We saved and we put a new roof on last year. It's very expensive, had to be done. We replaced our cement, thanks to the Livonia, partly to the Livonia Replacement Project that they're doing in the neighborhoods. Our street was replaced, and we ended up replacing our sidewalks, our porches, and all of our cement. So it has to happen. Livonia's doing it, they're planning for it, and that's what we need to do, is stay focused on the future. Thank you.
Ms. McDonald? Thank you. Well, we all know that the roads are terrible. We don't just drive down any of the county roads, and we all know that's an issue. And we also know in the, when we have water main breaks, which we have tons of those. So it's something we need to look at. We need to make sure that there's money appropriated for those structures. But I think we need to push and partner with Wayne County and partner with the Great Lake Water Authority to try to get some of our prioritized issues that we know that are problems right now. So I think we need to start there, and we need to, and I know council's been working with some of these things with Wayne County with the roads, but we need to do more. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCullough?
So this city, predominantly built in the 50s, 60s, and 70s, was master planned perfectly. We have two-lane roads, we have pocket neighborhoods, we've got easy access to the expressways. You've got a quick 20-minute drive down to, you know, downtown if you want to do something down there. I find it funny, because back in 2001, I was an intern in the engineering department. I was measuring sidewalks, and our infrastructure is dated. And I think that the current capital plan is not aggressive enough to make the repairs that are needed. They measure roads in the Pacer rating. I don't know how many of you are familiar with it. But it's a fancy truck that goes around and gives the roads, and these are the local roads, a number. After reviewing, I think that the Pacer rating numbers that show fair to good may not be as good as we expect, and I think more than aggressive. Now, getting the ear of the state and federal, because everybody's going to go, where's the money going to be? We need to have an advocate that will go to the state and go to the county and county and get these funds for better capital planning.
Ms. McIntyre?
Well, infrastructure investments are an ongoing priority for city council. We have the very regular infrastructure investments that we do on an annual basis. One of the things that Livonia does constantly is we evaluate, you just heard Mr. McCullough talk about our Pacer rating, but we do the same thing with our buildings, and we set aside money on an ongoing basis for maintenance. That's first, the most important thing. In addition to that, and just to name a few of the things that you don't always think about, the city hall, the libraries, the courts, the police department, the fire stations. Those all are infrastructure that require city investment that we plan for. Our parks require investment in infrastructure and upgrades. You see that too. The DPW building, and we need a new DPW facility. We're planning for that, we're budgeting for that. We also have a new water facility assessment and plan to ensure that our water infrastructure is taken care of. The other thing that you need to look at, that people don't like to hear about when you get to the point of repair or replace, and we're also taking on those big questions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McDonald?
I think the DPW department does a phenomenal job, but we are a large city, and there's a lot of work to be done. Almost 100,000 residents, over 5,000 businesses, large city, a lot to do. But I come from a perspective of I'd rather invest money now than wait and let that get worse. Because you end up spending more money down the road anyways. So I think it's a matter of us working with our department heads. We have a lot of great people, a lot of professionals in the engineering department, DPW department, that are very passionate about Livonia. They want to address these issues. Make sure we work with them, figure out how to be economically smart with our monies, because this is taxpayer dollars. But also, if we invest it the right way the first time, we're saving our community money over long run.
Thank you. Ms. McConnell? If elected, you will need to reach agreements with others whose interests may be in direct conflict with yours. Could you please describe the last time you collaborated with someone you disliked or disagreed with to get something important done?
I think I can do that. Well, as a former school board member, I think conversation and discussion is something that always needs to be done. So whether or not I would personally agree or disagree with the way something came to be as far as discussion of the majority. However, I think one of the things that you have to remember as a council member, or any elected official, or any group, would be that you have to learn to work with people, but you also have the right to bring forward your opinion on what you want to do and how you want to, how you feel, and how you feel the community feels, and base your decisions on that. It's something that, at the end of the day, when the vote's done, you talk about it, and you will not. Because once it's approved, it's approved, and you have to work with it.
Thank you. Ms. McCullough?
So this is democracy. You have seven people that are going to be elected for city council, right? You need different, various backgrounds. You know, me personally, from a sustainability standpoint, from a municipal management experience, I can bring a ton. But we shouldn't have all of that. We need different views. We need conservative, we need some liberal views, we need people that are vested to make our city the best it possibly can be. And so when you get that mix of the right group, you can do some great things. And I think that is currently what is lacking. That's why I'm jumping into the game. From a sustainable standpoint, and renewable energy, and infrastructure upgrades, and my passion coupled, I can bring so much to the diners. But again, you need different views. If you don't have it, you've lost. If you have one narrow mind with seven people acting as one, it's useless.
Thank you.
Well, I find the characterization of disagree or dislike a little bit interesting. Because I have to say, there just aren't that many people that I dislike. And certainly, on council and the other Livonia bodies, planning commissions, ZBA, I've never worked with anybody I didn't like. I've worked with a lot of people I disagreed with, and they disagreed with me. That happens every week, or every other week when we meet at council. And the important thing is, you listen to one another, you respect one another. And we have many examples of that on council where we have an agree. But we come together and we make a decision that's supported by the majority, and everyone understands how we got there. And you listen, you understand. Sometimes you hear to the other viewpoint, I have strong opinions, and I think well-formed opinions, but there have been many times that I've listened to an idea that was better than mine or different, and I took that approach. And the other important thing is that when the audibles call, when you come here and you have the vote and you have the discussion, we have lively discussion, but once it's decided, you go with it and you back your teammates. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Donovan?
I'd like to ask my father his opinion on this question. He's here tonight, so. At the end of the day, you have to work with one another, regardless of partisanship, as a nonpartisan. We all love Livonia. That's why you're here in the crowd tonight. That's why we're up here. This is our city. And when we work together as a government body, as neighbors, the entire community benefits overall. So I think it's just a matter of open dialogue, listen to people, even if you disagree with their current opinion. You might learn something, and you might end up thinking that your opinion is still better. But I think it's just a matter of working with one another and not thinking that you're too good and you can't listen to anybody. Because again, when we do work together, we do end up accomplishing a lot more as a team.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Well, if you met me over the last 30 years, you probably wouldn't have been having your best day. So we would have to have a discussion. But at the end of the day, you know, it's about collaboration. The way to get things done is to listen. You have to listen, because often people are chasing a symptom, they're not chasing a problem. So if you can listen, and you can listen to what they're saying, perhaps you can pick out the real problem. Perhaps you can drill down to what you're trying to solve. And you know what? At the end of the day, convince me, I'll change. At the end of the day, convince me, I'll change. You don't have to go to jail.
We started with, no, we didn't. We started with Mr. Davis.
No. No, that was. Do we have one more question?
Yes, we have another question. You answered this.
Oh, I asked it, that was first.
Back to me.
Yes, back to you. Okay. What is your voting record in the past 10 years, including school board, primary, general, and special elections? Have you voted always or missed?
So, I would say I would put myself smack dab in the middle, being transparent. You know, I'm 37 years old and it took, you know, a decent amount of time as, you know, growing up in 18 years old, I think that an after action is, is that voting needs to be something. We need to be advocates teaching the youth to get out and vote, because right now, if you look at it, there's very small percentages, you know, as learning this whole political game, you, you have the strategies and all that, but, you know, we have 94,000 people and I would like to see a bigger percentage. So, I would say personally, currently, yes, my voting record is where it should be, but as a youth, it might have not been so good and so that's where I take it as an education factor to make, you know, allow the youth not to make the same mistake.
Ms. McIntyre.
Well, you know what's gonna happen? The minute I say it's excellent, I'm going to say that anyway. Everybody's gonna run out and go get the records and figure out and call me out on votes that I miss. I'll say that it's excellent because, because of the process up until this year of requesting absentee ballots and because I was a working mom and traveled, there were probably some elections that I missed. I do my very best to never miss an election and that's been true, not just for the last 10 years, but for my voting life as far back as I can remember, which is a long time. I just want to follow it up by saying that my voting record at council and my attendance records at council, I know that's not relevant unless you're an incumbent, is outstanding. And I would say exemplary and I would welcome anybody to go look at the attendance records and verify that. So, thank you.
Mr. McDonald.
Well, I'm an old man, so 10 years that I couldn't vote. But, no, I'm not perfect. I've missed votes. As I got more involved in the community and learned about what the community can offer, when I decided I wanted to get more involved in my community, I started voting right away. But no, I, I'm not perfect and I think we all miss votes sometimes and I think it's a matter of educating, moving forward, I have tons of friends, I'm 27, as millennials, we all think our votes don't matter and that frustrates me so much because my family immigrated to America from a country that you couldn't vote in, you couldn't choose your representation. So, what a great honor to vote, to choose your representation. Democracy is a, democracy is a beautiful thing. So, I, I look forward to hopefully motivating my friends, my age group, as new families move to Livonia, to register to vote and to vote when it comes election day.
Thank you. Mr. Davis.
When we vote, we truly experience our democracy and it is something fantastic. When you travel the world and you visit other countries, it's something that isn't always a practice and the, the idea that we are self-governed is just, it's just, it's just a concept that I sometimes have difficulty putting, you know, putting in front of my students, the idea that when I ask them about voting, how, how they respond to me, sometimes they're not voting and I have to ask them why. I vote a lot, not early and often, but a lot. Every chance that I get, I, I, I really am excited to exercise the privileges we have in this country and I can't imagine any, living in any other place after seeing other examples. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McDonald.
Thank you. Well, I would have to say my voting record over the past 10 years has been pretty good. The thing that I think I'm most proud of is that I have instilled in my 22-year-old the importance of going out and to vote. I remember a couple of years ago when, I think it was when I ran for city clerk, and she came to the polls on her own and a candidate at the time said, oh my, you're, you're young, how come you're here? So, anyway, I think it's important, I think it's something that we need to teach our children on the onset when they're able to vote and eligible to vote, to encourage them to, because it's very important. And the only way we're gonna have any changes in our, our democracy is to encourage the young people to follow through on their right to vote.
Thank you. Now, we'll start with Ms. McIntyre. And this will be the last question, yes. Do you support the two school board proposals that are on the ballot? Yes, if you do, why, why not?
Well, I'm not in the habit of explaining to people while I'm going to vote. We have, we have secret ballots in this country for a reason. I, my track record is being very supportive of our school district, very supportive of responsible expenditures that are needed. I'm very aware of the role that outstanding schools play in people's decisions of where to locate their families or just where to locate even if they don't have kids. They want to be in a good school district because of housing values. So, when I make a decision voting on anything, whether it's an issue or a candidate, I take all the facts into account and I, I want to, in this case, deliver what's very best for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McDonald.
Going to Livonia Public Schools since elementary school, I know what, what it's like to be at LPS. I have a 11-year-old brother at Johnson right now. So, yes, I will vote and support both of those proposals. Education is one of the most important fundamental things that we have in this country, so when we invest and we talk about investing in our community, what better thing than to invest in our educational system? Unfortunately, the state is dropping the ball when it comes to school funding and us as a community, we can't let that happen. We have to pick that up and, and run with it and make sure that the children that are going to the LPS get the highest and best education so that they can move forward and get those kind of careers and hopefully buy a home right here in Livonia and take advantage of our amazing parks or our amazing music, music organizations, all the great things that we have in this community. What better way than to invest in our education system that hopefully they can get a good career moving forward and they come back to our community and raise families here?
Mr. Davis.
I believe, I agree with Ms. McIntyre that our school system represents part of our Livonia brand for excellence and that's part of the reason that makes us a strong community. So, I'm, I'm very supportive of the schools. I understand the limited role the council will have with the school budget and the millage request, but if you're trying to anticipate me or what decisions I'd make, maybe you've already guessed that I'm okay with an additional millage, as long as it's earmarked for things that are important, that I believe are important, are gonna be important in the future like security, target hardening, credentialing, video systems. Our schools need to be safe, we need to be confident that our children are safe at school, we need to be confident that our teachers are safe at school. And if I, if we could come to that agreement somehow, that, that would, how they'd use the funding, I'm all for that.
Ms. McDonald.
Thank you. Well, I will be supporting both of these millages this time around. The only, my, the operating millage, everybody has to go for, because without that, that funding, the school district would be out and I don't remember the exact numbers from when I was on the board, but I think it's like $26 million. Those funds come from non-homestead properties and businesses. They do not impact the, the taxpayers, the homeowners at all. So, that's something that we absolutely have, have. The sinking fund, I really wished it wasn't, it's really not a renewal, it's a request. The renewal would have been, I think it's like 1, 1.1%. This one is, I believe, 1.4 or 1.5. So, it's an increase. Will it pass? I don't know, but I will be supporting both. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. McCullough.
All right, I'm gonna spend, the, the first initiative, the operating millage, that's a no-brainer. There, there's no increase, it's $24 million that would not go to the schools. If anybody votes against that, that, I'm not even, I'm not even gonna go there. But I want to touch base on the sinking fund. All right, so, our schools, as I was saying on our infrastructure, were predominantly created before 1970. I have a five-year-old that's gonna be at Buchanan. I just want to highlight that the 2013 bond did not include oil replacement, roof replacement, security that is included in this. I just want to educate, use my time to educate. We're looking at a $4 a month increase. And so, now, taking, so, in theory, I'm gonna be supporting both wholeheartedly, but I must say this, as a council candidate, if I, if we can't agree on $4 to replace existing infrastructure that was predominantly built in the 60s and 70s, how are we supposed to push our city forward? Strong schools are gonna equal a strong Livonia.
Thank you. We will now then start with our closing statements and as Ms. McCullough started, we'll start with Ms. McDonald.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County who are hosting this forum this evening. I believe in transparency in government. I believe in politicians that have the good of the public as their vision. As being a member, as being a city council member, it's not just about being important or moving on to the next level in government, it's about building a pathway for our future and our next generation. There are many concerns, including the poor groundwater contamination and the impact on the families of Eldon Village, dangerous roads, roadways or vacant buildings, but I'm concerned that our council, somewhere along the way, has lost its voice. We need that voice back. We need open communications at the council table. We need to have frank discussions on contracts. Contracts and vendors' contract amounts are barely, rarely discussed, let alone published on council agendas. We need a council that fights openly for its citizens. I will be that voice, I will represent you. Please elect me, I'm Ms. McDonald, August 6th. Thank you.
I would just like to thank all the candidates who participated in tonight's forums for the Livonia City Council. At the primary election on August the 6th, voters can choose up to four city council candidates and the top eight of those vote getters will advance to the November 5th general election. Oh, I'm sorry.
Now we get two minutes apiece.
Today is just not my night. We will go to Mr. Davis and I apologize. And you all sit there so nicely.
Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for inviting me here today. Your, your mission to help inform voters is admirable and appreciated. My family and I are longtime residents here and I'm running for city council because of my extensive experience and desire and ability to assist citizens and the city of Livonia through service. I want to grow the city by fostering the future aspirations of citizens while preserving the values we associate with this great city, including excellent and accredited police and fire services, world-class schools, neighborhoods, support for an active business climate, and finally, I believe that taxes should represent our value while maintaining and supporting city workers in their daily operations, all within an overall framework of maintaining responsible tax rates. Thank you for listening. My name is Tim Davis and I'm asking for your support and your vote on August 6th. Thank you.
Ms. McDonald.
Well, this has been an amazing experience. I'm in awe right now how many people are here in this room tonight, all of you are participating in city elections. Oftentimes, we don't give city elections enough importance and, and these elections really are important. We represent our neighborhoods, we represent our community as a whole, so I think it's really important that all of us are active and engaged in this process. Really excited about running for Livonia City Council. What better way to get back to your community than serving it? I'm looking forward to meeting all of you. I've been knocking on thousands of doors, it seems like, and all through the community and learning so much about Livonia, things I've never knew before. And I'm really looking forward to serving and I'm looking for earning your trust and earning your vote. I will be here for the rest of the night and not leave until the last person leaves. So, my name is Rob Dallavick and I'm running for Livonia City Council. I hope that I can get your vote. Thank you.
Ms. McIntyre.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for tonight's excellent candidate forum. You've all had the opportunity to hear from most of the candidates for city council. You've heard different ideas, different perspectives, and different plans. The beauty of city council, as we alluded to before, is that there are seven members who all bring different experiences, knowledges, knowledge and views to the matters that come before us. Tonight, I have just a few minutes to share my ideas and thoughts about how to continue to make Livonia the very best community it can be. However, you've had the past four years to see how my ideas, experience, work ethic, and integrity have helped to move our city forward in the areas of economic development, public safety, fiscal responsibility, and being an inclusive and welcoming community. You know that I'm passionate about Livonia and public service. You know that my family and I volunteer for and serve many organizations that make life better in our community. So, I would once again like to ask you to make sure you vote on August 6th and to vote for Kathleen McIntyre, a respected, experienced, and trusted leader on the Livonia City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McCullough.
So, I, I was gonna go off the script here and I must say, being a Livonian our, my whole life, we are such a passionate community. You know, I was the, the little youngster driving around or riding around my BMX bike in the Columbus Circle neighborhood growing up. I was educated, like I said, through LPS. I graduated with honors from Lawrence Tech. What I do for the city of Nova is I manage multiple divisions. I'm a trailblazer. I manage sustainable initiatives, putting solar panels. These aren't just thoughts or, or, you know, advice, these are things, quantitative results that I have shown. I want to do that in my backyard. I'm 37, my wife and I were high school sweethearts from Livonia Franklin. She's a teacher at Livonia Franklin. My daughter is five years old. I'm rooted in this community. I have everything that I can bring to the table and I do not hold an alternative agenda. I want to serve our city in a leadership role. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, we'd like to thank you, the candidates, for being here this evening. In the primary election on August the 6th, you vote up to, for up to four people and eight of the top vote getters will move on to the general election, November the 5th. And I would just like to say, off script here, I live in another city and I do these foreign moderations quite often for the League and I always, right away, will tell the president that I want to do Livonia, because you residents are so lucky to have the number of people that are willing to step forward and be public servants. It's not easy these days. With the advent of social media, people may not want to even do this, but you have, you know, 12 people who are putting forth efforts to run. So, if all of the audience will please stay seated and the candidates up there could please move off so we can get the mirrors. Thank you again. Okay. Are you good enough? No?